Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Before we start the meeting, I do want to make an announcement. Last night Andrea Downs, for personal reasons resigned from council. Which, once again, it was for personal reasons. She doesn't want to, as council often does, make a big deal out of things. But do want to acknowledge all the hard work and all the stuff that she accomplished while she was here. And she will be sorely missed. We will be working on the process of replacing her and that information should be forthcoming very quickly. So with that, since now we're down to five council members. We need to have at least three for a quorum. So with that, Deb, would you please do a roll call?
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi is excused absent. Counselor Perser?
Here.
Counselor Parrish?
Here.
And Counselor Miller is also excused absent.
All right. Feels very light up here.
It is pretty light.
So with that, I'm going to ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence to collect their thoughts. Followed by the pledge of allegiance and I'll try not to yell this time. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have an agenda set forth before us. Are there any changes?
Mayor, I would like to note for the record that there was a correction to a cover sheet for the ordinance 2025-05. The cover sheet at the top listed it as 2025-06. But it should have been 2025-05. And I have made that correction. Also, there is an addition to the consent agenda of Resolution 2025-13. That is ratifying and authorizing staff's actions regarding real property closings for 19 road improvements.
I see that additional line item G on the consent. So for under action items, it's ordinance B, correct? That should be oh five?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. With those changes, would anybody like to?
Move to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
First and a second. Which really means if something's going to go sideways, you're the deciding vote on this. Finally, Paul Council.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Perser? Counselor Parrish? Motion passes three zero.
Thank you. We have one proclamation this evening. Recognizing women's leadership entrepreneurship and history. And this is to be accepted by Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce Executive Director. Our very own Kayla Bowers and James has volunteered to read.
All right, recognizing women's leadership, entrepreneurship and history. Whereas Women's History Month is celebrated annually in March to recognize and honor the vital contributions of women in our nation's history, culture and society. And whereas the city of Fruta values the leadership dedication achievements of women. Who have shaped and strengthened our community through business, civic engagement, education and public service. And whereas the Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce has been a steadfast advocate for the success and advancement of women in business. Through its Women in Business Group. Providing opportunities for professional growth, mentorship and networking. And whereas the Women in Business Group hosts monthly networking luncheons. Quarterly activities and signature events, including the annual Women's Entrepreneurialship Luncheon and the Women in Business Conference. Which empower and support women in business and leadership roles. And whereas 2025 marks the fifth annual Women in Business Conference. A milestone that reflects the chamber's ongoing commitment to fostering an inclusive and thriving business community where women can excel. And whereas the city of Fruta recognizes and appreciates the countless women entrepreneurs, business owners, professionals and community leaders. Who contribute to the economic vitality and quality of life in our region. And now therefore we the Fruta City Council do hereby proclaim March 2025. As Women's History Month in Fruta. And encourage all residents to celebrate and support the women in our community. Recognizing their contributions and advocating for continued opportunities for women in business, leadership and beyond.
Thank you very much. Kayla, would you like to come up and say a few words? And I see Ali really wants to come join you.
Thank you to City Council and Mayor Bremen for the proclamation. Recognizing the contribution of women leadership and women in business. It's an honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce. And the incredible women who help shape our community. Women have always played a pivotal role in building strong communities, thriving businesses and creating opportunities for future generations. Here in Fruta, we see the impact of women in business owners, entrepreneurs, civic leaders, educators and change makers who drive innovation and progress. The Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce is committed to empowering women in business through mentorship, networking and professional development. Our Women in Business Group has grown into a powerful network, offering monthly luncheons, quarterly programs and signature events, as you mentioned. Like our Women's Entrepreneurship Luncheon and the Women in Business Conference. These events are not just about networking, they're about building confidence, forging meaningful connections and ensuring that women's voices are heard in every industry. As we celebrate Women's History Month, let's continue supporting and uplifting the women in our lives. Whether they are business owners, leaders or aspiring entrepreneurs. I encourage everyone to take part in our Women in Business programs. Mentor the next generation and celebrate the achievements of women who inspire us daily. Thank you again to the city of Fruta for this proclamation and recognizing. Where everyone should have the opportunity to lead, succeed and make history. Let's keep working together to make Fruta a place where women in business thrive and grow.
Thank you. And also you just had a very successful Women in Business Conference.
Fifth year. It was great.
Provide a quick update.
Yes, so we had about 250 women come together. We've had so much great feedback. I was actually on vacation right after the women's conference, but I had to peek at the feedback. And it's just been so great to see all of the overwhelming support and positive remarks about the event. So we're really, really happy about it.
Thank you very much. Kayla, would you come on up? All right, next we have the public participation in consent agenda. This section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public. Arring items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda or that are on the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before the council or final actions. These items will be approved by a single motion of the council. We're here, we're here to hear from everyone who wishes to speak and we want to ensure that all voices are respected. To maintain a welcoming and productive environment, we ask that there is no clapping, cheering, booing, cheering or sign holding. This helps us to ensure that everyone feels comfortable sharing their thoughts, even when opinions differ. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak and I ask that you please introduce yourself with your full name and address. While we won't be responding, please know that we are definitely listening. And thank you for being here, for engaging in this process and for treating each other with respect. So with that, is there anybody that would like to come up and talk about anything that's on the consent agenda? Or anything that's not on the agenda? And you have to give your full name and address.
I'm going to see Bob Dull one of these times. You guys are going to be so surprised. Testabenum 255 North Ash Street. I'm going to throw a lot at you, but you guys can all do hard things, so. House Bill 211110 mandates that by July 1st, 2024, all state and local governments must improve accessibility for all digital content according to the standards set by the Office of Information Technology. Accessibility is defined as perceivable, operable and understandable digital content that enables an individual with a disability to access the same information, engage in the same interactions and enjoy the same services offered to other individuals with the same privacy independence and ease of access. As exists for individuals without a disability. The Office of Information Technology says that the definition and statute apply to more than just internet content. And I would agree with them. House Bill 241368 was approved on May 28th of last year. It established a language access advisory board. To enhance legislative access to individuals with limited English proficiency disabilities or no college degree. House Bill 241122 was approved or was effective January 1st of this year. It includes provisions requiring temporary and permanent protection orders to be written in plain language. Colorado revised statute 22801 requires bills and amendments to be written in clear, plain language using common words that are, that an average reader easily understands. January, September 2023, the Office of Information Technology conducted a training session for local governments emphasizing that accessibility is essential with over 1 million Coloradans, which is 1 in 4 people having a disability. On the Hemingway app, which is recommended by that office. The Office of Information Technology, you can add documents to find the readability and grade level of whatever you put in there. The agenda tonight requires the first year of college education. The proclamation that you read, 11th grade. The T-Mobile lease on the agenda, 7th grade. The entire vehicle and transfer or in traffic section of the municipal code, postgraduate education. Do you get it? If you wanted the codes to be accessible, they would be. If you wanted the information presented at meetings to be accessible, it would be. If you wanted all the people to feel like their voices mattered, you would make it happen. I meant what I said earlier. You guys can do hard things. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak at this time? All right, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. So as a reminder, if there's something on the consent agenda. We can certainly talk about it before votes or acceptance. So the only thing which I, as I was reading through it, looking through the financial reports. I'm trying to pay close attention to our sales tax numbers. And although they are up, I am starting, this is starting to continue to see that trend of retail continuing to decline. I just think it's one of those things that we have to keep an eye on. I know two months does not make a trend. But it, two months starts to become something to look, look at. That's kind of only my, only comment on that.
If you're going to do that, it's look back at years past because January, February is obviously not, I mean, it's definitely not our best months and it never is. So that would be a better barometer is if you look back over, you know, the few years to instead of like the end of last year or whatever, yeah.
So Joe, when we look to give over a prior year. That actually takes into account the seasonal fluctuation in those numbers? Or when we look at budget, is it just 1/12? I thought it included kind of the seasonality.
It does, yeah. So every once in a while you will have one time expenses that can make those numbers fluctuate. To Counselor Williams' point, yeah, compared to 2025 or 2024 and even 2023 or January was lower. But when you look at 2021 and 2022, it's still significantly higher. January was an odd month. We can dig into the data and see if we can find anything specific because a lot of that decrease was in wholesale trade and some retail as well, but county sales tax was up compared to the prior year. So that one's a little hard to explain, but we're always kind of looking into that. And for our budget, we actually budgeted to have no increase in revenue by the time we got kind of final year end revenues. Because we never know what they're going to be at the end of the year when we make those projections. So as long as we stay consistent with the prior year, we'll continue to meet budget hopefully.
I did notice county was much higher than I anticipated, which I didn't understand. I don't think there's really a need to dig into it. It's just more of, we just let's, we just need something that we need to pay attention to and see how that tracks. That was my only comment. Anybody have anything else?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
First and second. Deb?
Counselor Perser and Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you very much. We do not have any public hearing tonight, but we do have three action items. The first one is a quasi judicial public hearing ordinance 2025-05. The second reading approving a lease agreement between T-Mobile West LLC, Delaware Limited Liability Company and the city of Fruta and authorizing the city manager to execute this lease. And Joe, I believe you are presenting on this.
Evening. Joe Zare, Finance Director, City of Fruta. Presenting on the lease agreement, fighting with this microphone. So actually this is an amendment to a lease agreement that we've had with T-Mobile for some time now. I believe it started in 2015 originally. It was supposed to run through 2030 before they renewed it. But they chose to renew early, which was very helpful because in doing so. They increased the rent to their original 2030 dollar amount. So we're actually getting more revenue sooner. And the terms of the lease remain the same. This tower is out on a water tower out off of 340. Nothing changes with it per se. They have five different opportunities to renew for five-year terms. They've been very good about it. It really requires very little on our part and provides revenue to the city. And I'll take any questions you got.
Well, first we have to open up for public comment.
Okay.
Don't go anywhere. With that, is there anybody here that would like to participate in public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to council. Anybody have any questions on this item?
It's pretty straightforward to me.
All right, with that. I would need, we would need a motion.
I move to approve the lease agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the lease. To prove ordinance 2025-05, second reading of lease agreement between T-Mobile West LLC, Delaware Limited Liability Company and the city of Fruta and authorizing the city manager to execute the lease agreement.
Second.
That one? All right, we have a first and a second. Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
You're not going anywhere.
Oh, you got another one.
And this is ordinance 2025-06. All right, next on the agenda, second reading approving a lease between Colorado Department of Transportation and the city of Fruta and authorizing the city manager to execute the lease agreement. And let's see, oh, Joe, you're still up.
Joe Zare, Finance Director, City of Fruta, still remaining so. Yeah, so this is kind of a funny one. This lease agreement was actually in effect at one point in time. It terminated in 2020. We got a phone call from CDOT saying, hey, we want to renew that lease agreement from five years ago. We had no, I could find no records of it or anything. And so Deb was so kind as to go down into the cellar. Brush away the cobwebs, find a box and find the original lease agreement. And it was very similar to this. This has a little more stipulation to it. This is a 10-year lease agreement with the, with CDOT. This is for the boat ramp that people use on the side of 340. It's on the east side of 340 as you're traveling south. Most people know it as like that dirt spot that everybody gets in and out of the river. But apparently it's technically a boat ramp. So this is for 10 years. The cost is $500 in, in rent for the 10 years. The couple of things that we did that were added to it were that we have to maintain the area. So should the boat ramp wash away or something? We could be liable to repair or replace. The one thing that we will do is be putting a trash can down there and having regular trash service to pick that up. I believe that's $50, I think is what it was stated as, to have that done on a weekly basis. And other than that, this is something the community uses. It would be a shame to have CDOT come in, throw a fence down there and say, sorry, you didn't pay the $500 for 10 years. And so I would highly encourage you to approve this.
Right.
Also, let me add one more thing. If the launch happens to come about before the end of that 10 years, we could cancel this lease and use the launch.
Or we could have them both.
We could have them both, but you know, this is kind of a little, you know, haphazard. But it's always good to have, I guess, secondary spot.
Anything else before we open it up to public? All right, with that, I'd like to open up ordinance 2025-06 for public comment. Is there anybody here that'd like to speak on this ordinance? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to council. So a question is, I know this lease very much predates our lease software. But I'm assuming moving forward, this is in the system and you know, it's kind of hard to keep track of a 10-year lease.
Like I couldn't find the original payment for the original lease is how old that original lease?
When it sounds like we got it for free for five years too.
Yeah. I think what happened was they hired somebody new and told them, go through all the leases and make sure we're up to date.
That makes sense. Yeah, it's good. We definitely want paperwork.
And then we still carry the liability on that.
That is correct.
And Mr. Mayor, to answer your question, yeah, a few years ago, we did purchase a software to help with some new government accounting standards that we have to meet with all of our financial statements. So a lot of that is in reference to software-based IT agreements. So we have several of those. But also keeps track of all of our long-term leases as well. So yeah, we'll be able to document it and identify kind of the true cost of it throughout the term of the lease.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's exactly why we want something like that to help with those issues.
Yep. I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-06, second reading, a lease agreement between the Colorado Department of Transportation and the city of Fruta. And authorizing the city manager to execute the lease agreement.
Second, first and a second. Any additional comments, questions, concerns? Deb?
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you. We have one more item on this, on the action item section. Which is Resolution 2025-11, amending the 2025 budget and supplemental appropriations of funds for capital projects, capital equipment, supplies and special projects initially included in the 2024 annual budget. Finance Director Joe Zare, you're still here.
I am still here, yes. So this is kind of a standard thing that happens on an annual basis with the budget. Where we have projects or items that either didn't get purchased, didn't get finished. And we're just asking to carry those funds over into this year so that we can continue with those projects or make those purchases. Number of items here for reappropriation. Public Works pedestrian sidewalks for 44,000. That's at the crosswalks for Monument High School and the Fruta Middle School. Parks and Recreation, completion of the mural at Mulberry, $5,500. Mesa Street, re-appropriating funds for the designing construction of the, of the South Mesa Street gateway. And then construction of the sewer on South Mesa Street that'll come from sewer funds, Maple Street Bridge. Design and engineering of the Maple Street Bridge area. Fremont Street intersection coming from Capital Projects, the Right Way acquisition for the intersection and for property along there. 19 Road Project continues and will continue into late 2025. And we all know about that. And the sewer line to go along with it, the broadband project is grant funds and ARPA funds to be carried forward as well. Fruta Community Center, I will just qualify this because we had a little bit of a typo here. So this is for the $600,000 for the current project that's going on to build the, build the office space. And then 29,500, that's for equipment to be replaced and such. Down at the bottom, there's another Fruta Community Center replacement of equipment. Disregard that. That is all captured in this one. We have Orpark Construction. That was as we had the grand opening. It is done. So we're paying those bills now. Greenway Drive Construction, UV Design for the wastewater plant. So this is a cheaper way to, to oh, purify or the water, the water. So this is just for design. This isn't for the actual system itself. Wastewater Vehicle Replacement, that was scheduled previously, but then the vehicle was wrecked. Not our fault. Not our fault. And so we're replacing that. And that is all of the reappropriations. And then we have items for new appropriations. Public Works Road Maintenance, the chip seal project. So we've seen this before. And once again, last year it was, came in higher than we had budgeted. Same things happened again. So we're just asking for additional funds so that we can get the chip sealing done. That's an additional $100,000. Road maintenance projects and overlays, need an additional $20,000 for that. Parks and Recreation Administration. This is for the Pedal Kids Ditch and Training Wheels Program. That'll come out of scholarship funds and Parks and Recreation Special Events for the party trailer, $17,500. And that will have all the necessary items for block party. And if you have any questions on those, either.
Well, with that, I need to open up to public. Would anybody care to speak on Resolution 2025-11? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public participation, bring it back to council. James?
I just wanted, I was curious to, when we take the actual physical discussion of block party trailer, do we know?
Parks and Rec Director Mark Mancuso is in the back. As soon as the budget amendment is approved, we can move forward with the purchase and with that, the trailer. I believe that's on site locally, then we just have to get it wrapped and then purchase some additional games, chairs, coolers, trash cans, stuff like that that also goes into it. So I would imagine probably the next two to three months. Does that sound correct? Yeah.
Can we do a, like a City of Fruta unveiling and maybe do a block party and kind of show what it is and showcase it and we maybe do the first one?
Yeah.
That wasn't budgeted for.
Well, we'll have to reappropriate.
Want to do it at a Thursday night concert?
Oh, yeah.
We could. We could do it in the parking lot and have it's
Yeah, we can easily, yeah, coordinate that. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah, let's look at that. Trying to see how we could coordinate it with that. That would be good. Yeah, I think that's probably you're really, you're right on the nail there because that's going to be the best bang for the buck of being able to present it to a larger crowd and we could talk about it on the mic and, and some stuff too, so. I, I can do that. I've been known to do that.
I do have a, this may be a fully nerdy question. I apologize. On the first line item. Public Works Pedestrian Sidewalk Safety Improvement, the 44,000. Everything else in this section is a reappropriation. But the first item is an appropriation. Can you help me understand?
Misspelling. Misspelling.
Sorry.
It should have been re-appropriate.
Okay.
It, this one is a little slightly different. So you definitely caught on the nuance for sure. So we had the additional funds for the sidewalk pedestrian safety improvements last year where we added crosswalks on Maple Street. Right down by Family Health West as well, by the new pickleball courts and then on paper. So after we get done with that project, we had about fifty thousand left over. And then we asked council if, we got a request from both Fruta Monument High School and then the Fruta Middle School to install the flashing lights at two crosswalks due to the schools being consolidated and more students going to those two schools. So council gave us the thumbs up to move forward with it. So it's a, it's an appropriation of funds that were appropriated in the prior year, so.
Yeah, I'm just.
It's, yeah.
It's not really a re-appropriate.
It's an appropriation, yeah, yeah. And that was intentional. I wasn't expecting anyone to catch on that. It is an appropriation of funds that were appropriated in the prior year, so not exactly a reappropriation, yeah.
Operation for the original.
Intent. It slightly differs. We're starting to expand the use of that, so it used to just, you know, sidewalk replacements. We've expanded that to be pedestrian safety improvements. So we think the sidewalk replacements definitely meet that definition, but also as we go through and add flashing lights and do some other improvements to our crosswalks, we think that's probably a good use of those dollars as well. Yeah. Yeah, and those four.
No, it was a good question.
And those four will look slightly different than the ones we installed. They'll be kind of the bulkier, the ones you see on Twelve Street over by the university. Yeah, so that's the main difference in expense.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five eleven, amending the twenty twenty five budget to reappropriate and appropriate funds in the general fund, Community Center Fund, Capital Projects Fund and Sewer Fund for the Capital Projects, Capital Equipment Supplies and Special Projects.
It's actually harder with only three of you guys here. All right, you got the second. All right, any other questions, concerns or comments before we vote?
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish? Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you very much. And that we close out of our action items and we have nothing on the administrative agenda. So which, we're gonna jump right into our city manager's report.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Very quick report tonight. I just want to share that the community survey, the twenty twenty five community survey is currently being printed and should be arriving at homes either late next week or the week after that. City Link should also be arriving very soon. We actually got our batch of spring city links here at the Civic Center today. So we'll start putting those out in the building, so hopefully the ones in the homes are shortly after that. We're able to include almost all of the feedback from the council in that survey, so I think that turned out really well. And hopefully will help us with some of our decision making in the future and hopefully we get a good response rate as well. So definitely, when you get it, we encouraging people to participate. And I know I've already started on our walks and everything else because it's such a great tool to get feedback. To bring up the city council vacancy, so just briefly, we've had to do this a few times in the past. The last for Heather O'Brien and then when Joel Kincaid was elected mayor, we had to fill his position in twenty eighteen. So kind of the normal process is we put out a call for applications. We generally have that open for about two weeks and then council can review that application and then decide who they'd like to interview and during the interviews decide who to appoint for that vacancy. By our charter, we have sixty days to fill that vacancy, so we do still have plenty of time. And we anticipate that kind of following this timeline, putting out the call for applications next week, putting in the Sentinel, putting it in the update and also putting on our website. You can do interviews in April and then have a decision made probably by that first meeting in May to meet the requirements. Definitely just want to take a moment though to thank Andrea for all of her hard work over the past year. And she will definitely be missed. And yeah, the, yeah. Finally, that's all I have. Hope everyone has a great rest of their spring break. Thank you.
All right, with that, gonna bring it back to council or reports and action items. We're in a public meeting. If you've got something to say.
I'm just, spring break is for young people. That's all I was saying. It might have hearkened back to something earlier that I was talking about, but that's all I'll say. Sure. I do have one thing. I had a lady stop me and brought up an issue and I, I, I asked her to just send me an email because it'd be easier. So I'm just gonna read the email I got and hopefully that this lands to the right people. Okay, da, da, da. "I live on Sierra Drive. When I am going somewhere, I have to stop at the corner of North Mesa and Sierra Drive. If you do have to stop, it's usually halfway into the road to get a clear view. The problem is all the brush by the bridge. It is so thick, even this time of year, it does not allow for good, clear line of sight. My suggestion would be for someone to go in and clean up a lot of the scrub brush and it would be extremely helpful." So again, if we could just have someone look into the corner of North Mesa and Sierra Drive. It sounds like there's probably some overgrowth or something, like kind of that same concern that we've had over here, right?
Yeah.
So I, I asked her to do that and she sent me the email. So I'm doing my diligence and bringing it to you guys and ask that you would check into that. And if you want to check in it, let me know. I can check back with her or I can send this to you guys.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thanks. Other than that, I, I don't have anything else.
I, speaking of spring break, I am on spring break also. And which meant I got to go to the Chambers Downtown Committee meeting today. Colin usually goes for me, but I was able to go. And like James has reported in the past, like it's a great group and it's fantastic. The two main topics this time around was Fourth Friday coming up, but then also the Fall Festival. And there is a little disheartening news about the Fall Festival because sponsorship is, sounds like sponsorship is under this year compared to last year. And so currently, if things stand as, as they are, they won't be able to have the stage at the Circle this year. And as we all remember from this most recent Fall Fest, the big feedback and greatness was how much it felt like how we love Fall Festival to feel because there were two stages and all of the things that like, any of us who've been around for longer than five years would remember it being that way. And it feels like a step backwards in that regard. And it was really disheartening to me and everyone in that committee. And so we kind, we asked if we could hold off on making that decision to sort of put out in the world that they need sponsorships. They need a presenting sponsorship of eight thousand dollars and then a Friday night sponsorship of four thousand dollars for the stage and then a Saturday night of five thousand sponsorship for the stage. And I'm just throwing that out to all of us and like if there's any, if you know anyone who might want to sponsor or anything like that to sort of maintain the momentum that was gained this past Fall Fest because it, it would be pretty. There's, you know, I, people have been in flux about their feelings about Fall Fest for many years and they really made strides this past year. And I just, it would, it would be unfortunate to not be able to keep moving toward with that momentum, I feel like. And I don't know if you have any thoughts on.
I, I definitely concur with everything you said. I, when I was told the budget mount, I was kind of shocked and there was no possible way. It's not even enough really to do one stage, to be honest. So I did the best I could and stretched their budget as far as I possibly could. So we have, the one stage is booked and I finalized and everything and it's ready to go forward. It's not to anywhere near the level of what we've done in the past. So it, it's very frustrating, but you know, money is what it is and you can't, can't make money appear. But I, there will be a lot of people that are going to be disappointed, especially after, like you said, last, we made the progression back to where we had been before and it was back to, felt like Fall Fest again. It's gonna not feel like Fall Fest this year again.
Discussion and I will report back in terms of where those decisions are going. And I do know that there are some other sponsorship. People are reaching out to new and different people looking for sponsorship.
Yeah, and it seemed like the people on the committee were willing to reach out to other place, you know. So within a month, if we, if there can be, you know, if, if there's any way, like it seemed like they were willing to.
It would be hard because we're, we're.
Getting close.
Well, it's not only that. It's like I've already, I've already done it. Like I've already put together the lineup under the parameters that they had. So it wouldn't be like, I could, I could, but it, it adds a monkey wrench to it. It's a lot easier to just come at, come at it from the beginning with the whole thing, obviously. But you know, if they came to me and sent me a thing, say, hey, we have budget. I mean, I'm obviously gonna put it together, but it, it is frustrating.
And the parade is gonna be likely a different route too because they're moving the venue middle of the street instead of the side. So that will feel, if they're not gonna do the parade down Aspen Street, like you're really, you're messing with people's traditions.
There's a lot of things that are not gonna go over well this year with it.
So if, if it can be, that'd be great.
I think the chamber's caught in a difficult.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not blaming them.
Downtown businesses are like, hey.
I know.
We get shut out, so doing that.
Oh, yeah, I, I get it. It makes sense. I'm just saying, we should be aware because.
It comes back on the city a lot.
Even though the city doesn't run it, it does come toward us. So just that is a report, but the group is great and there was great feedback and there was great brainstorming and.
Yeah, that little business group is, is good. It's a good group of people.
I do have a question in regard to, since Andrea stepped down. She was sort of our link to the, the Creative District event that we're supposed to be speaking at. And so what do, what, what are our thoughts about that? Okay.
So that was discussed and she is still willing to be, leave that, to kind of walk us through that.
Okay.
And she, it was discussed, she'll just be former council member.
Okay.
But she has committed to leading us through that entire.
Okay, great. Because we, we talked about meeting, you know, having some separate meetings for that to get prepared. So that's still, we're still go.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. I just wanted to make sure we had our decks in a row.
That was discussed.
Yeah.
That's all.
The Tourism Advisory Council met to hear the proposal by Barnhart as to the specific campaign and the things that they were going to do. Council approved the plan that they presented and they will be meeting at our next workshop with us to discuss the billboard. And but, I mean, consensus of the, the council was unanimous as far as approving the campaign that Barnhart proposed and the things that they were doing. So I think you'll be not surprised, but you pleased. It's probably the best way to put it.
Looking forward to it.
And part of that will be in the workshop. They'll talk about some of that, so. Because billboard was one of the avenues that Barnhart talked about, so. That's all I have.
That's it? I want to thank Council Member Perser, sounds so formal. Kind of talking through some stuff that I know that you're passionate about in terms of the community and being willing to, not willing, but saying, yes, we should put that on hold until after we get the community survey back. Do we have a meeting scheduled afterwards to really dive into that so we can spend some time kind of digging through it? I just don't remember if that's on the schedule.
With the results of the community survey?
Yeah, so we actually have a workshop time, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we definitely can. And the consultant will be scheduled to give a presentation to council as well. And yeah, we can, however much time you want to spend in a workshop, we can discuss that, yeah. Regarding, because I think you're also, we were talking about potential a short term rental discussion next one and putting, holding off on that till after the survey. There will be for our housing needs assessment, which is in the twenty twenty five budget. I did want to share that there will be a lot of community engagement with that as well and probably some surveys too. So if there's other things we can ask regarding growth or short term, short term rentals, we can do so. It won't be the statistically valid survey, but it will be open to anyone who's interested in participating.
I think between the two, that's a great guide.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, then we'll have some lead time from, from the initial survey to come up with questions for the secondary survey that'll give us. Yeah, that, that works out well, I think.
Yeah.
Not only just like willing, but kind of encouraging. Let's wait till we get. I've got a Fruta Chamber meeting tomorrow. For as incredibly busy as it feels we've been, I've actually got nothing else to report.
We have a ton coming up.
Yes, as a reminder, we do have the informal city review, attorney review on April first. I'm gonna lighten up the format a little bit because it's the informal. I'll try to get that out this week to you guys. We can get started on that. And that's all I've got. I don't see need to go into executive session for any reason. Does anybody else?
No, I don't.
It's seven forty six.
This is the record. This is a world record.
I feel like we should wait. All right, seven forty six.
Well, it was Andrea the whole time that's been holding this up. What it's been.
I like, James is gonna give you a stare down if you say you don't need an executive session. Watch out.